This is a very emotional time for myself and I'm sure most of the board members. I was sitting here listening to the many people who were speaking today and feeling the parent who had to pray. I was always listening to the man who resulted to cursing, and I was wondering, is this the model that we want for our kids? It's one thing to be emotional, but it's another thing to model behavior that we don't like to see in our kids, and that really bothered me. While I was sitting here, and even before today, I thought, could we wait another year? Could we really, would it make a difference? And I thought back to my own personal situation. Went to the dentist last week, and he said, "You need to have oral surgery. You can't wait." And I said, "Maybe I ought to wait." He said, "It will continue to decay, and the pain will be unbearable." That's what's happening, has happened to our schools. Being an educator and a member of this, my community, for over, educator in the schools for over thirty-five years, I've seen the decay. And I just wonder, I wish a lot of the people who are here now were here then to help me fight the fight, because when I was in Inglewood, it was hard to get ten parents up. That's only community members sometimes. So I'm glad to see that you're ready to fight now, and I'm glad to see that you're gonna hold us accountable. I hope you won't become invisible, like you were when I was fighting for the various schools and the kids that I was in. I welcome your coming, and we will continue, I know I will continue, to monitor management and go into the schools and make sure that we do what we said we were going to do, because the decay can no longer continue. The pain is too much, and that's why many middle-class African-Americans have left this city. That's the majority who have left this city. When we talk about what's happening, it's because in many cases, we have not stepped up like we should, and I'm talking about us as African-Americans. We talk about safety, I don't care how many police we bring, and what this board does, the kids are unsafe if the parents, if it does not start in the home. These are somebody's children. I told David, I said, "A good thing, I gotta find some good in addition to I know these kids will be better educated." The other good thing, I told at a CAT meeting that Andy and I were at the other day, that I think, we have the opportunity, some of the parents there at this meeting asked about keeping the name of a school, I'm not sure whether it was Jackie Robinson, 'cause it meant a lot more than the school they were going to. I said to them, "This is your opportunity to bring, bridge the parent feuds that have been going on that Andy's talking about. Maybe if you all get together and work together to select the name you want, and start to work together so that your kids..." It's the adults, when you hear about that safety, "'cause adults can't walk to school," these are old gang, old members, and I'm hoping that CPS will put some things in place that FACE and CAT, the churches and communities, to bring conversations together, because it's not the kids feuding. It is the adults, and I know, because I've grown up in it. So I say that they will, much as we can do, they will only be safe if the parents begin to work together to provide the safetiness. Also, another very positive thing I see, for the first time en masse, we're going to be able to select great principals, and I don't care what you say, many of these schools have gotten to where they were because the selection processes did not put great principals in place. All of you know that it will be the leader that will make the difference in the school. So we have an opportunity to get great principals, I hope the LSCs will get training on how to select them, and we put them in place and begin to move forward. And as I said before, I welcome any of you to come and meet with me. I'm looking forward to you being as visible and verbal as you are now, if you're not cursing, and we can move forward. And I thank you for your participation today.
Most of my colleagues have said some of the same sentiments that I would convey, but I just wanted to say thank you to the CPS management, because we are one team, but board and management have different roles. And my role was to nudge, push, doubt you, question you, and you all, hopefully I did it respectfully, but you all rose to the challenge and every challenge, because that's what everybody out here expects of us to do, and that's our job. And so, thank you for responding to that, thank you for still working as one team and doing it respectfully. And that's what I would ask from everybody here, everybody across the city, that even with management, we didn't always agree, and the outcome today won't be a hundred percent what I would have dictated, if I had the magic wand to do what I wanted to do. Frankly, if I had the magic wand to do what I wouldn't do, I wouldn't be doing this today. But here we are, and I think it's a difficult thing to walk away, it's a very easy thing, rather, to walk away from a problem than to acknowledge it and fix it. And I do believe we're addressing that finally today. But like management and board at CPS, community and board and management at CPS have to respectfully disagree but work together. I've served on school boards for eight and a half years, and by far, this is probably the most difficult day. Dealing with Springfield budgets was never, was never a party either, but this is more difficult. And yet, the only thing that keeps me coming back, because this is a volunteer gig, none of us need to be here, but I believe in it, frankly, it's something I think it's important, it's a sacrifice, it's my family made, so that I could have great opportunities to have a better education and prospects than they had. My dad only went to the third grade in Mexico, so the bar wasn't that high, but he worked very hard so I could have those prospects, and I hopefully, I honor his memory, he passed away in the course of this whole process, by providing those same opportunities for other children, and I trust that's what you're doing. That's what we're doing here today. But we need the collaboration of everybody. Everybody may disagree about how do we do it, but we need to come together for the same common goal. And that's what keeps coming back, because I see a lot of great energy and passion, as long as it's respectful and productive, but if we don't, we're gonna continue to have a stratified school system, we're gonna still compete, complaining about competition between charters and neighborhood schools and other schools, which frankly, when we have competition in public education, who loses? Our children lose. That's about the adults, it's not about the kids. And so, we need to get beyond that, we need to come together, and we need to focus on the outcomes that we need to have in our city, for our children and for all of us.
Any other comments? Thank you all, again. And Madam Secretary, will you please proceed with the vote on the public agenda?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will begin with the items on the public agenda, and I will only read the board report numbers, since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda, and I will begin with resolutions. RS1, Mr. President, this item just needs to be accepted by the board.
Madam Secretary, please mark "Received" and "File."
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with resolutions that do require a vote, and they are RS2 and RS3. These items do require a vote.
May I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Beenan?
I'm trying to just find out where I am here, Madam Secretary. Thank you.
Thank you. I will document Dr. Beenan as an A. Moving on to Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays. I will continue with communications. These items do not require a vote. The first communication is CO1. This is regarding the location of the June 26th board meeting. It will be held at the Central Administration Building, 125 South Clark Street, Board Chamber, fifth floor. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 a.m. Public participation guidelines are available on www.cpsboe.org or by calling 773-553-1600. For the June 26, 2013 board meeting, advanced registration will be available beginning Monday, June 17, at 8:00 a.m., and close Friday, June 21st at 5:00 p.m., or when all sixty speaking slots are filled. You can advance register during the registration period by the following methods, online, by phone, or in person. The public participation segment of the meeting will begin, as indicated in the meeting agenda, and proceed for no more than the sixty registered speakers for the two hours. The next communication is the communication regarding the 2013-2014 schedule of regular board meetings. To the members of the Board of Education, I am hereby submitting the 2013-2014 schedule of regular board meetings, and the board meetings will be held on the fourth Wednesday of each month unless otherwise indicated. The board meetings will be held in the Board Chamber, fifth floor, 125 South Clark Street, beginning at 10:30, and as noted earlier, registration for public participation will open the week prior to the board meetings, from Monday at 8:00 a.m., and close Friday at 5:00 p.m., or when the sixty slots are filled. Only advanced registration is available, and you can register, advance register during the, this period, online, by phone, or in person. And the, further, let the official record reflect that the 2013-2014 planning calendar has been prepared in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act, and we will also post this information on our website and have copies available in the board office. Mr. President, the next items on the public agenda do require a vote, and they are EX1, EX2, EX3. For the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on EX3. Moving on to EX4, and then EX5. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with additional items that do require a vote, and I would like to note for the record that this is the group where the separate roll call will be taken on the eight school action board reports, and they are EX14, EX19, EX22, EX27, EX33, EX53, EX78, and EX107. As we proceed, Mr. President, I'll note which action item each number refers to. We will proceed with these items, and once this, these actions are taken, I'll continue with the other school action reports, as well as the other items on the public agenda. The first separate roll call vote, Mr. President, is for the EX14 item. This is the board report to close Miriam G. Kanter Middle School, and I would like to note that the CEO recommended that the closure be delayed a year, so the vote before you, Mr. President, would be that request. If the board decides to move forward, then we would place a final version of the board report for Kanter in the agenda of action. So at this point, Mr. President, this item, EX14, does require a vote.
May I have a motion, please? So moved. Second?
Second.
I will proceed with a roll call for the closure of Kanter with the revised proposal from the CEO Barbara Bird Bennett. Dr. Beenan?
Aye.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays. This action is adopted. The next separate roll call vote, Mr. President, is EX19. This item is to close Leif Erickson Elementary Scholastic Academy. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
May I have a motion? So moved. Second, please.
Second.
I will proceed with a roll call on EX19. Dr. Beenan?
No.
Dr. Hines?
No.
Vice President Reese?
No.
Board members up?
No.
Dr. Ascoitia?
No.
And President Vitale?
No.
We have six nays. EX19 has failed adoption. I would also like to note, Mr. President, that since EX19 for the closure of Erickson failed of adoption, it necessitates the withdrawal of board report EX73. So EX73 is withdrawn from the agenda. The next item for separate vote is EX22. This is for the closure of Marcus Mosea Garvey Elementary. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
Motion, please. So moved. Second?
Second.
I will proceed with a roll call on the closure of Garvey. Dr. Beenan?
No.
Dr. Hines?
No.
Vice President Reese?
No.
Board members up?
No.
Dr. Ascoitia?
No.
President Vitale?
No.
Six nays. This action failed adoption. The next separate roll call vote, Mr. President, that will be taken, is for EX27. This is to close Mahalia Jackson Elementary School, and, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I will proceed with a roll call on the closure of Mahalia Jackson. Dr. Beenan?
No.
Dr. Hines?
No.
Vice President Reese?
No.
Board members up?
No.
Dr. Ascoitia?
No.
President Vitale?
No.
Six nays. This action failed adoption. The next item, Mr. President, for a separate roll call vote, is EX33. This is for close the George Manier Elementary School, and, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
Motion, please. So moved. Second?
I will proceed with a roll call on the closure of Manier. Dr. Beenan?
No.
Dr. Hines?
No.
Vice President Reese?
No.
Board members up?
No.
Dr. Ascoitia?
No.
President Vitale?
No.
We have six nays. This action failed adoption. The next item for separate vote, I'm sorry, noting that failed of adoption for EX33, it necessitates the withdrawal of EX64, so EX64 is withdrawn from the agenda. The next item now for separate roll call vote is for EX53. This is the close Alexander von Humboldt Elementary School. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I will proceed with a roll call for the closure of von Humboldt. Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
No.
Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
No.
Vice President Vitale?
Yes.
We have four ayes, two nays. This action is adopted. The next item, Mr. President, is for a separate roll call vote, EX78. This is for the reconstitute Clara Barton Elementary School, and, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
I will proceed with a roll call on the reconstitute of Clara Barton. Dr. Beenan?
No.
Dr. Hines?
No.
Vice President Reese?
No.
Board members up?
No.
Dr. Ascoitia?
No.
President Vitale?
No.
We have six nays. This action failed adoption. I would also like to note, with EX78 failing adoption, it necessitates the withdrawal of EX8E4, so EX84 has been withdrawn from the agenda. The next item for separate roll call vote, Mr. President, is EX107. This is to approve the relocation of Kalman Corporate Community Elementary School, and, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
May I have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
I will proceed with a roll call on the, approve the relocation of Kalman Corporation, and that, Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
And President Vitale?
Yes.
We have six ayes. This action is adopted. Now, Mr. President, we will continue with the additional school action board reports. I will only read the board report number, and I'll begin with the closures, and these items do require a vote, and they are EX6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, EX12, 13, EX15, 16, 17, 18, 20, 21, 23, 24, and 25, EX26, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, EX39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, EX50, 51, 52, 54, 55, 56, 57, and 58. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with the school action board reports for the program reports, and these items do require a vote, and they are EX59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 74, 75, 76, 77. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with the school action board reports for the reconstitution items, and they are, and they do require a vote, and they are EX79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 85, 86, 87, 88, and EX89. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now I will continue with the school action board reports for the colocations and the two other school action reports on the agenda for the attendance boundaries for Thurgood Marshall, and then the, rescind the approval, to discontinue the expansion of the Mason School. Those board reports are EX90, EX91, 92, 93, 94, EX95. For the record, Mr. President, I would like to note an abstention for Dr. Hines on EX95. Moving on to EX96, for the record, I would also like to note, Mr. President, an abstention for Vice President Reese on EX96. The next item is EX97, 98, 99, 100, EX101. Moving on to EX102, Mr. President, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on EX102. The next item is EX103, and on EX104, Mr. President, I would like to note, for the record, an abstention for Dr. Hines on EX104. The next item is EX105, and then we have EX106, and, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with the other board reports on the public agenda, and these items do require a vote, and that would be AR1. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on AR1. Moving on to the next items, PR1, for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note an abstention for you, President Vitale, as well as Vice President Reese on PR1. Moving on to PR2, 3, and PR4, Mr. President, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR5. I would also like to note, for the record, Mr. President, an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR5. The next item is PR6, and PR7, Mr. President, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR7. Next item would be PR8, and PR9, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR9, and, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now I will continue with a separate roll call vote for PR10. This is the amend principal preparation program services under the Chicago Leadership Collaborative. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
May I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
I will start with the roll call vote, and then before we start, Mr. President, if I may, note an abstention for Vice President Reese on this matter for PR10. Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Noting the abstention for Vice President Reese, we'll move on to board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
We have five ayes with one abstention. This action has been adopted. And now, Mr. President, I will proceed with the additional items on the public agenda that do not require a vote, and they are EX108, EX109, and AR2. And, Mr. President, these items just need to be accepted by the board.
Please accept and file, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, there are no further items on the public agenda. We will now proceed with the closed session motion from Dr. Hines, please.
I move for the passage of motion number 13-0522-M01, and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subject specified in the motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Beenan?
Aye.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays. Motion adopted.
We will now proceed into closed session. Meeting of the Board of Education is reconvened. Madam Secretary, please proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will start with items from closed session, and I will begin with council retention. These items do require a vote, and they are Franzy Rattlet, PC, Second Report, Safar Shaw, LLP, Third Report, Sabrina Alhague. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Beenan?
Aye.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes. Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. I will continue with settlements. These items do require a vote. First report, workers' compensation, payment for lump sum settlement for Antonia Akari, case number 08WC23086. The second report is the workers' compensation, payment for lump sum settlement for Pedro Cervantes, case number 08WC39391. The third report is the workers' compensation, payment for lump sum settlement for Doris Cooper, case number 06WC7117. The fourth report is the personal injury authorized payment of settlement for Edgar Goldsberry and Adrian Patterson, case number 08L000656. The fifth report is approve amended settlement of Illinois Educational Labor Relations Board, case number 2012CA009C. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you. I will continue with warning resolutions, and these items do require a vote, and they are Deidre Brown, Principal, Gresham Elementary School, Joanne Carrow, tenure teacher, Diet High School, Monica St. John, Washington Urban Elementary School, Blanca Tenorio, tenure teacher, Peace and Education Coalition High School. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with items from the board, and these items do require a vote. And the first report is the resolution by the Chicago Board of Education regarding the dismissal of Jonathan Brooks, tenure teacher assigned to John Harvey Elementary School. And for the record, I would like to note that this resolution accepts the hearing officer's recommendation. The second report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. The third report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers. And, Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note that on May 8, 2013, the board members and the offices of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to BORV4-7B2B and 105ILCS5/34-84. Her recommendation included the name of the teachers affected and the reasons, and she also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I believe that Vice President Reese has a motion, please?
I do. I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of April 24, 2013 pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality continues to exist. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on April 24, 2013 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection at this time.
Can we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Benin?
Aye.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays, and I believe board members up has a motion?
I move that the record of proceedings of the rescheduled regular board meeting held on April 24, 2013, prepared by the board secretary, be approved, and such record of proceedings be posted on the district's website in accordance with Section 2.06b of the Open Meetings Act.
Do we have a second, please?
Second.
I will proceed with a roll call. Dr. Benin?
Aye.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. I will now continue with real estate exec items. These items do require a vote, Mr. President, and they are: First report, disposition of bids received for the sale of land located at 1009 North Cleveland Avenue. The second report is the disposition of bids received for the sale of land located at 1855 North Sheffield Avenue. And the third report is the disposition of bids received for the sale of land located at 5051 West Polk Street. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would like to note that there are no further items from closed session, Mr. President.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Will you adjourn? Thank you. Thank you, everybody.